Good afternoon, everyone. I'm showing that it is 1 o'clock, so we are going to get started. My plan is to finish just a little early or right on time, based on the fact that I know some of you have other things you need to do, like teach. So we will keep this to the hour. I want to thank everyone for joining us. We have about 65, now 70 participants on the call. And we have two colleges, although we're not policing that. So there could be other colleges in the mix here, too. But this town hall was intended for College of Business and College of Science and Engineering. And I have just a few slides to run through, and then we will open it up to questions. Before I do that, I want to make sure to introduce the deans, who are co-hosts for our town hall. I'm not sure who we have from College of Business from the dean team. I see Neil there and Bob. Do we have John as well? Bob and Neil, if you could just introduce yourselves, and we will then move to Cozy.
Neil, talk. Welcome, everybody.
Hi, guys. It's Bob. Neil and I are splitting the dean duties while we await Shane Hunt's arrival in June.
Do we have John and I on as well, or just the two of you?
I haven't seen John log in yet.
Okay. And then for College of Science and Engineering, of course, we have Scott Snyder. Scott, are you on our call?
I am on the call. Hi, Laura. Hi, everybody. I am unlike Bob and Neil. Instead of splitting duties, I am being split by. So I am the dean of the College of Science and Engineering and for who's counting. But about two more months, and I know the days and the hours. I will be vice president, interim vice president for research. And then Donald Liebeck will take over on July 1, which, although I really enjoyed it, it will be nice to just be dean again.
Yes, that will be, I know, nice for you and nice for the college as well. We do have just a little bit of an update in the slides from research. I know that research had its own town hall, but there may be questions in this group about that. So I've included it here, and Scott, I'll just turn it over to you when we get there. I wanted to share a couple of things before we get started with questions. Darren, you can advance. Thank you. I wanted to share the results of the faculty survey that we sent out not too long ago, about two weeks ago, I think. Was it just a week ago? Maybe it was just a week ago.
Just a week ago.
Just every day feels longer than normal. But I will share the preliminary data. There's still some data coming in, but we'll share what we have. I wanted to just give a brief introduction about where we are institutionally on a couple of items. As you know, the summer sessions, the first summer sessions have moved to a distance environment. We are still evaluating whether or not we're going to move the post-June sessions to a distance environment, getting additional information from the Health Department and from a team of people we have on campus that are working on our back-to-work plan. We should know more about that in the next week or so. That team's looking at phasing what it will look like when we do go back to work. Of course, our courses remain in a distance environment right now, at least through this spring term and then those first summer sessions as well. In terms of where we are, this is, as a historian, a unique opportunity for me to live through a truly historic period. We don't have another period that has any comparable aspects other than probably the period prior to the entry of the US into World War II and the impacts of the war itself on the home front after 1941. That's historically the only time period in the modern era. And I'm counting, I'm not counting the Civil War for reasons that I think we could talk about here, but you probably don't want to. It was such a different time that it's not really comparable. So for the modern era, the only comparable period of time we have for comparison is that period right before World War II and during the war. And that means that we are in very uncharted water here in terms of how we interact with each other, how we manage our institutions. And as a result, we have to be very flexible and supportive of one another because the concerns that we all have, the fear and the anxiety is all very real and also very normal under these types of circumstances. We just haven't experienced it, unfortunately. We're the lucky generation that's experiencing this. But there aren't too many examples, but we don't have too many people we can ask. You know, what was it like when you had to deal with the Spanish flu, for example? So we are forging new territory. And as a result, I ask that you all maintain flexibility and support of each other. That's certainly been something we've seen. Our faculty have really, as you know, as all of you have done, made huge efforts to accommodate our students and to support each other during this time. And that's really the goal of Academic Affairs, is to do what we can to support the institution and our faculty as we go forward in uncharted territory here. With that, I'll share some of the faculty survey results, and you can get an idea of how the faculty are feeling as a whole. This question. How satisfied are you on a scale of 1 to 5 with the engagement of your students in the new teaching environment? Now, of course, some of our faculty were already in an online environment, so this did not apply to them. But we do have, I would say, middling results here, mostly threes and fours. So mostly sort of satisfied is what I would say. Next slide. On a scale of 1 to 5, 1 not being concerned at all. How do you feel? How are you feeling about student success? Are you concerned about student success in your courses? I would say that this is sort of a broader range than we saw in the other questions. It's a mix. There are fewer people very concerned or very few people not concerned at all, and then quite a few who are quite concerned. Next slide. And then we asked about department budget issues. We know that there is a lot of concern in the departments about budgets and about transparency of budgets. We met this morning, the Leadership Council met. Those slides will all be shared. Kevin and I have committed to sharing those slides with the campus as a whole. Certainly, you can reach out to my office if you have questions about budget process at the institutional level. And I know that our deans can speak to that as well. How concerned were our faculty about department budget issues? 1 was not at all concerned. So this one, I would say, has the most consistency across the board. 64% reporting that they are quite concerned about budget at the department level. Next slide. And then, how concerned are you about technological challenges in a distance environment? This is not surprising that we saw some concern here for those technological challenges. But as you can see, we're all over the map. We have faculty who are already teaching online. We have students who are very comfortable in that environment. And then the opposite is true as well. ITRC has been committed to reaching out to those faculty and students who have been having problems and are reporting that most of the time they've been able to work out those challenges. Now, of course, this is not a perfect environment. I would so much rather be with you all in a room. And so that piece of this, we just can't fix. But it is a very different experience for most of our faculty. Next slide. And then on a scale of 1 to 5, how concerned are you about maintaining a research and service portfolio? 1 not being concerned at all. And then 5 being quite concerned. I would say pretty much a mix here as well. That's largely a function of the very different program mix we have on campus. As we've said in other venues, we have one of the most complex program mixes of any institution in the country because we have CTE certificate-level programs all the way to research PhDs. We're seeing quite a bit more concern about this question, not surprisingly. And Scott may want to talk a little bit about that with our research, productive faculty and our tenure-track faculty. I would say we're seeing quite a bit of concern with tenure-track faculty. Clinical faculty are perhaps busier than ever, than they've ever been. This, you know, in the public health department, they're buried in work. And so we really have a mix here. Next slide. And then I just wanted you to see what the comments, you know, the positives looks like. For those who commented on positives, this is how those positives broke out. ITRC is a standout. We had a lot of comments on how supportive the ITRC has been and several requests not to cut its budget. I certainly am trying not to do that because I know that ITRC support is critically important to our success going forward, and it does report to the Provost's Office. And then other positives included the transition to online leadership in this time period. And one of the questions was, you know, how are you doing? And of those who had positive remarks, they also said they were doing okay. Next slide. And then concerns. Concerns are all over the board here, as you can see. Probably most prevalent, which won't surprise you, is the online teaching technological challenges. At 16% of those who had concerns said they were concerned about that. Budget is pretty prominent here in the yellow piece of the pie. Communication, communication is always a challenge in a large stratified organization. And certainly now that we're 100% virtual, that's even more challenging. So these are how the concerns break out. Next slide. Before we get started with questions, I just wanted to say a few words about promotion and tenure. I know that our faculty, our tenure-track faculty have expressed quite a bit of concern about promotion and tenure and about meeting those standards, given the challenges that they are facing in this time period. As a result, the Provost's Office has created the opportunity for faculty to request stop-the-clock action if they have been impacted by coronavirus. We won't ask any questions. We'll just approve those. And that's up to 2-year stop-the-clock mechanism. And I'm showing you the link here, but it's also posted on our website, the Academic Affairs Coronavirus website. And it was in a communication that went to the deans as well. Now that said, I think we're going to see some other possible changes happen at the local level. As you know, our departments are all very different. They all have different criteria that feeds into the institutional criteria. And so different programs will be impacted in different ways. But there will be potentially some changes that departments may want to make to how they are managing tenure and promotion related to the outcomes of COVID-19. We don't know what that looks like right now, but there is that possibility. And I just want to make sure that we do everything we can to be supportive and flexible while maintaining the rigor of that process. Next slide. So teaching evaluations, we've had lots of questions about teaching evaluations. This is a different environment. This is not best practice, as you all know, that we would decide in the middle of the semester to go 100% online. Everybody did it, though, all of our sister institutions, of course, and almost everyone in the country. And as a result, this term will just be an odd outlier, we hope. We hope that it's just this one term and that it's an outlier. And as a result, certainly, the Provost's Office will take that into account on any evaluation of teaching from this term. But we've also issued a statement about what that means, that we want deans and chairs to take into a special accommodation when evaluating teaching for this term. For example, the kinds of feedback on teaching evaluations that might refer to problems with technology, concerns about Zoom, not understanding how to find a document, weirdness with the syllabus, those kinds of things, post our transition to distance really need to be discarded in evaluating those teaching evaluations. And we will help deans and chairs with that going forward. But certainly, that statement is out there, and I want to reassure faculty that we won't be evaluating the types of decisions that were made on the fly. For example, was it better to be synchronous or asynchronous? We're not making that judgment in my office. We are supporting the faculty decision to structure their course, how they chose to structure it, and supporting that decision. And going forward, we might have to have additional conversations, depending on how long we are in a distance or quasi-distance environment. But at this time, we anticipate being face-to-face in the fall, and we'll evaluate those latter sections for summer in the next week or so. Next slide. And at this point, I just want to turn it over to our dean team in the College of Business and to Scott in Science and Engineering for any updates they want to share or anything they want to add. And I have research here, too, Scott, in case you want to add a couple of items about that as well.
Super. Thanks, Laura. That was very informative. From the Cozy side, as Laura mentioned, I just presented my 4%, 5%, and 6% cuts to the Leadership Council of the university this morning. As soon as we're done with this event, I will be speaking with the Cozy Faculty Senate reps and going over those. And then those documents will eventually become public. And Laura, do you have a sense of the timeframe when those will be posted publicly?
My understanding is that it will probably be next week.
Okay.
I think Jen's on our call, though. Jen Steele, our budget officer, are you on our call?
Yes. So the PowerPoints will be presented next week or early the following week, along with a summary narrative of the budget process and outcomes.
Right. So right now, folks in the college, I just want you to know, and I'll try to have a town hall for Cozy a little later. I've got some stuff that I want to talk to kind of in prep and things to think about for the summer, so we can talk about this in much more detail at that point. But what I want to point out is that the budget reductions are not going to impact lecturers or tenure, tenure-track faculty. So I have done everything I can in the current scenario to hold faculty harmless on this. That has resulted in some other things that you will see and that we can discuss later. But I know that's been a concern across campus. And I just wanted, and I want to tell you from our college's perspective, where I'm at with that. Now, I had some ways I could get to that that maybe other colleges didn't. So you can't compare all the colleges, and they were apples. But I did want to let you know that. I think that's probably the highlight of it or lowlight, if you will. But, you know, this has not been a fun process, and it's been a very intense process, as Laura and Jen and Neil and Bob in particular know. From a research side, we had a forum for the Office of Research, one of these town halls, last Friday. If you were not able to make it, I'll be really brief on the summaries. The big thing is, right now, you can't do any field research that's university-supported. No vehicles, no money, no nothing on that. And we're just awaiting advice and guidance from the Governor's Office before we revisit that. So the travel ban, the university travel ban is still in effect, and it affects field research. I know it's nice out there. I'm a field biologist. I get where you're at, feeling anxious about that, and totally understand. The other thing for lab research, we are letting some vertebrate animal research go on in the lab and some COVID-19-related research go on in labs with appropriate social distancing. We are, in those cases, allowing some graduate student on-campus participation, but we are not allowing undergraduate student participation. If your research doesn't meet that vertebrate animal, doesn't fall into the vertebrate animal category or the COVID-19 category, the campus is closed, and you can pop into your lab to check on, make sure your freezer's still running or whatever it is, but you're not allowed to go in and do research. And your students certainly are not allowed to come on campus to do research. So please keep that in mind. I know it stinks. I'm a scientist, right? I get it. But we just have to do this. And hopefully, when things loosen up a little bit, we'll be able to move relatively rapidly to reopening some research functions. So that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. Dean team from College of Business, anything you want to add at this point?
So I think, oh, go ahead, Bob, in a second.
I was just going to mention that, you know, Neil did a great job this morning presenting our budget to the Admin Council. And he should be commended for that because this is not exactly what he signed up for. So I'm really thankful that he's been able to do that. And for the most part, in our college, we did have a all-faculty meeting Friday back. And basically, everything that Neil presented, he already told you in that faculty meeting. There's.
Yeah, same general approach. So if anybody has any more questions on that, just talk to me offline, and we'll go from there.
Yep. And then if anyone is feeling sad about not being here in the building, just realize it's nearly 80 degrees now in my office, and the AC has not kicked on yet. So I envy you who are at home.
Thank you. You all have touched on something that is so critically important and that this is just really difficult. I mean, nothing about this situation is easy to manage. And it includes research and teaching and just our normal, everyday lives. But coming to the office and seeing our colleagues, and we don't even get to do that. And then we have other people who are ill and sick and terrible impacts from the illness itself and then the economic impact for so many of our colleagues. So this is just devastating. And we don't want to make light of that at all in any way here. But I do want to say that the faculty have really risen to the occasion and we're appreciative for that really amazing effort that you all have put forward. And with that, I want to introduce Jenny Laramore. She is going to help us moderate questions. Jenny, are you on the call?
Hi, yes. Hey, everybody.
Hi, Jenny. She'll tell us how to do it.
Absolutely. So if you'll hover over your Zoom video and you look at the icon that says chat, it's kind of in the center bottom. I'm going to send everybody a chat right now, so you can see what that looks like. So you'll get a little yellow notification, and that should take you straight to the chat feature. And then to ask a question, you have two options. One is you can ask it to everyone, like you have here in this question that I've asked everybody. And then you can also ask an anonymous question. So to do that, you'll just go down to the blue dropdown and click my name. And you'll know it's anonymous because it will say Jenny Laramore and then, in parentheses, privately in red. And I'll take the questions in order. And then I will feed them to Laura, and it will be very open. And I will be ready to take any questions that anybody has. So I'm going to put myself on mute now. And you may have noticed as well that the session is being recorded. We're going to add that to the town hall website, which is isu.edu/townhall. And all the recordings of all of these town hall meetings will be on there as well.
Thanks, Jenny. With that, we will open it up for your questions. And if we don't get any, I'll make some up.
Okay. We have a first question. Is the College of Business planning to cut funding for adjunct instruction?
Dean team, I think that is a question for you.
So as of right now, that is not within the budget parameters that we put forth. Granted, we're also waiting for.
Bob, I'm unmuted now. We have no plans to cut adjunct funding at this time. However, there's some movement with adjuncts every year based on what departments are staffed and what departments are not staffed. So we will deal with adjunct funding as we go through next year. But we don't have any plans to cut it overall. We'll just shift it around to where it's needed.
And if I might, Laura, just to, if that question comes up on the Cozy side. Frankly, on the Cozy side, it's adjunct funding that is going to be a primary source of our budget reduction. And I realize that that will have impacts, and I will work with the chairs and the departments to minimize what those are.
And that question raises something else that I think I can answer, which is, you know, did the guidance that went to the deans have any parameters in it? And the answer is no, other than 4%, 5%, and 6% targets. But we did not say we want you to look at any mix in particular. We left it up to the deans. And so the result is that, left that up to the deans and chairs. And the result is that the outcomes of that process really are varied across campus.
When we're using an online forum to notify the Provost's Office when we want to offer an incomplete to a student, then wait for approval before we set the contract with the student. How much time should we expect for turnaround from the Provost's Office? I'm sure they're overwhelmed right now.
Those are going to be fast. We have created an online forum that we've provided a link to. The approvals will happen, hopefully, within the day that they are submitted. And the registrar's office will post the grade. The way you'll be able to see that is that you'll be able to see that the grade is posted, but you will also be notified. But the faster way to tell whether those incompletes have been processed is whether or not you can see the grade posted. My expectation is that we will manage those as quickly as we possibly can. We are unlikely to say no unless the situation just could be addressed in a different way that would be better for the student or if there is some question about why the course isn't completing. But for the most part, for individual student requests for incompletes, those you should expect to see flow-through seamlessly and be posted by the registrar's office. In other words, you won't have to go in and post the grade, but you will have to create the contract with the student.
It sounds like Admin Council met this morning to talk about budgets. Can you share with us any new information or how that went this morning?
It was actually Leadership Council. And Leadership Council is the deans plus an admin council. And what happened at that meeting was that each dean gave a presentation of what their 4%, 5%, and 6% reductions looked like. It is the first time Leadership Council has seen those in aggregate. We haven't had an opportunity to discuss those at this time. It was the presentations only this morning. I do have Glenn and Jen on the call, and they can add anything if they would like. Glenn, anything you want to add to that?
No, I just think the presentations went really well. This is the first day of three days of meetings this week with Leadership Council to go over the budget. And we went over the academic proposals from the academic side of campus today.
I just added to the chat a link on the budget website. We have an overview of the Leadership and Admin Council process and timeline. So I just put that link in the chat bar there.
And as a reminder, the budget process should wrap up. Is it the first week of May, Jen?
Yes. Okay. We've talked a lot about faculty. If there's anything that you'd like to say to employees who are concerned about budget cuts or concerned for our jobs. Okay, we've talked a lot about faculty. If there's anything that you'd like to say to employees who are concerned about budget cuts or concern for our jobs?
I do, I definitely do want to address that. We have focused a lot on faculty and faculty support. We are also aware in the provost's office of how much anxiety this budget process is creating for our staff. And concerned about our staff and how they're feeling as well. I know that that finance, and Jen and Glenn can address this as well, have been working through supports for staff in this time period through HR. HR has taken a lot of questions from our staff. But at this point, I, I want to remind our staff that, that we aren't at this time talking about notifying broad swaths of our, our staff or those types of actions. And I can have Jen and Glenn talk about that. But the academic units, based on what I have seen in the budget process, have worked very hard to maintain their staffing levels and to the extent that they are able to support students and programs. And I know that, that our deans and chairs are committed to to ensuring that level of support even in this difficult time. Glenn and Jen, anything you want to add to that?
I think you covered it well.
And like I said, this is, this is a scary time for everyone. And we are doing everything we can to try to minimize the negative impacts of the, of the budget need, the, the state's budget requirements while also maintaining our programs and our core mission, which all of us are engaged in, including our staff.
For cases where faculty lines will be reduced, such as the adjunct Scott, Scott mentioned, what are the criteria being used to determine who stays or goes?
Well,
Go ahead, Scott.
No, I'm sorry, Laura, if you want.
I was just going to say, at this point, we haven't determined whether, you know, we're not at the end of our budget process. These are all proposals right now. And so those proposals are, are under consideration. But we haven't had any conclusiveness regarding those proposals. Once we do make those decisions, then those criteria would, would need to be worked out with the deans and the chairs that, that are impacted by those decisions. Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah. And I will say that again, more is absolutely correct. We don't know this is going to be happening. Everybody should remember these are all proposed cuts and that, that the, the whole leadership team will work together to decide what's in the best interest of the university. Should we have reductions in the adjunct budget? I want to be really clear. It's not about the individuals. It's about how do we most effectively serve our students with the resources that we have available to us? And so in the case of the College of Science and Engineering, I've got to keep my eye on accredited programs and maintaining accreditation. I've got to make certain that any reductions in, in the number of adjuncts don't affect either that accreditation or as importantly, in any program, even one that's not accredited, that those reductions don't affect time to degree completion. We've got to still maintain that pathway towards a timely degree completion. So those are really the two primary criteria that I have for working with the chairs to determine what, how we need to adjust our teaching to account for any possible cuts there. But, but again, we'll worry about that when we start crossing that bridge.
I want to add to that, that the provost's office will be monitoring the impact of any adjunct reductions and making sure that in the event that we start to see enrollment really pick up, which very well could be the case. We are in an uncertain enrollment environment right now. Our, our point in time enrollment comparisons are, are not accurate. It's like apples to oranges. And so we really are unclear. We know that seventy-two percent of students surveyed who were in progress are planning on returning. So that's good. That came from Student Affairs, making sure that I got that right. That was a student survey sent out last week. So that's a very positive sign. We, given the uncertainty, we will be monitoring that very carefully in the provost's office. If adjuncts budgets are cut and we need more adjunct funding, we will, because of enrollment increase, we'll find it. So I just want to make sure everybody that we won't allow those reductions to decrease revenue if we see significant increases in enrollment occurring. All right, Jenny, I'm ready.
Okay, no additional questions right now, which also means no waiting. If anybody has any questions, they'd like to chat to me.
I, I see a question to me privately. Is the plan to have staff work from home through the first half of the summer? That is something that is under consideration right now. We have a team of, of people, including our health professionals, who are looking at the data and evaluating the guidance that's coming from the governor's office and from the CDC to determine what a phased back to work plan will look like post the state home order. That is, as, as we all know, still unclear in terms of, of what the state will do on that issue. But this team is working right now. They're meeting this week. They expect to have some preliminary recommendations next week. So we could very well see a phased plan where a portion of our workforce does work from home for a time while we work through the, the phases of free entry.
Some schools have been very successful with online schooling. Is this an opportunity that ISU can seize upon or not?
That's an opportunity that some of our programs are looking at as expansion for online. I know the College of Business and they could probably speak to that, our deans. But they have looked at expanding online offerings because, due to student interest and demand. We see that in other places in the institution as well, but it is quite individual. We have some other colleges with some significant hands-on requirements. College of Tech, for example, is looking at instituting a split model going forward, a little bit more online, but they really are a face-to-face entity and, and are anxious to get back into their hands-on labs. So this, this is a buy-program opportunity, but we do think that we will have some programs take advantage of that.
Yeah. And I would say from a Cozy perspective, we're, we're thinking about it. There are some programs within Cozy, math pops immediately to mind that, that, that are amenable to it. The issue with so many of our science and engineering programs is in computer science, I'm seeing Paul Bodley over here. Computer science would be another one that could be done more online. But the issue we have in, in so many of our disciplines is much the same with the College of Tech, as we rely on labs and pratica and other in-person, hands-on experiences that we're getting by as, as the Cozy faculty know right now, but it's probably, I don't know that anybody or, or if you do tell me would consider it the optimal learning environment with, without those labs and those hands-on experiences. So it's a challenge for us to, to do a lot of online in most programs.
Are there plans to recruit students from big metropolitan areas after the situation improves? ISU can use this as an opportunity to, to replenish the budget cut.
I know that Student Affairs in our Office of Admissions is looking at the changing landscape and making some evaluations on how to handle recruiting in, in that new landscape. They also are looking at how past recruiting efforts have been doing because we've increased our recruiting in major metropolitan areas already. And evaluating, you know, how well did that work in California? How well did that work in Seattle? How well is that working in Portland? And, and looking at investing the recruiting funds to those areas that are seeing the most yield, understanding that, that entire environment might be different now in fall. So Student Affairs would definitely say that they are evaluating all the options that we have available and that they are working on plans to capitalize on that as we understand more. We have seen anecdotally, but we just don't have aggregate evidence of that yet. But anecdotally, some student interest in being in a more rural, less populated environment, which wouldn't be surprising as one of the outcomes here.
I know things are pretty uncertain right now, but is there some sort of soft deadline by which faculty can expect to more or less know whether we should be prepping our fall classes for online delivery versus in-person delivery?
Well, I will say that this is making me absolutely crazy. And some of you who, who know me well, know that I like to have like a six-month plan. I like to know what we are doing. And so I'm pretty, you know, on the scale here, pretty anxious about that decision for fall. Right now, we are planning to be face-to-face. We understand things can change dramatically. We are going to work with the team that's looking at our reentry plan. My hope is that we can have a soft plan in place as soon as we know what the state will do with the state home order and, and what that, what the state's phased-in approach will look like. We may end up with a phased approach that, that does require large lecture sections, for example. I mean, if we have sections over a hundred students, that it may be that those have to be phased in later. So we are looking very likely at a phased plan that would limit some large gatherings, maybe even into the fall. And with the hope that we can be face-to-face in every other way. So that's where we are currently. And I am in pretty constant contact with the health group. I think they're tired of me asking this question because I, like you, really want to know what we're planning for, how to do that, how to support faculty. But it does look very likely that we will be face-to-face in at least a phased capacity and hopefully in a pretty, you know, dominant capacity by that time. So that's, that's the best I can offer right now. We're telling our students, we expect to be face-to-face. And as soon as I know more, I will communicate that. I expect that to be within the next two weeks.
Okay, this is a related question. Is a long-term plan for university operation being created to address the possibility of a resurgence of COVID in the fall or later?
Yes. And that team that I've mentioned a couple of times, the Health Operations Team, they are looking at, you know, what happens if we have an outbreak in Polk's Hello? What happens if we have an outbreak in residence halls? What happens if it's on campus? And what happens if it's on our, one of our other campuses as well? We will have decision points for each one of those scenarios. And the results will be that we will go into a different phase of our structure, similar to what we did when we phased in. It was such a quick phase in that I don't know how, how much of it was noticeable, but we did have a telework plan and then a, like sort of modified social distancing plan very early in this process. I expect that the reentry will look similar to that. And then we'll have to have a plan for what happens if there is an outbreak. And we do have to make a rapid decision about going at one hundred percent distance in a short timeframe. My hope is that that is minimized, but we, they are planning for that.
Many CEOs, such as General Electric, have responded to the crisis by taking a voluntary pay cut. So besides budget reduction on adjunct staff, et cetera, I'm wondering whether some of the leaders of the university slash colleges are considering similar moves.
We had, as one of our budget reduction ideas, pay cuts for certain classifications of staff. Glenn, do you want to address that? I know that it's on the list of things that we are talking about globally.
Yes, yes. From a global perspective, we are looking at what the impact of a furlough, a furlough plan would be. And certainly if we did any type of furloughs, they would, I believe would be tiered in nature from the higher level employees, higher paid employees potentially taking more days than a lower, the lower paid employees. So that is one thing that's on the table. No decisions have been made. We haven't formally put forth a plan for that yet, but it's certainly something that we will be discussing at both Leadership Council and Admin Council. For a short-term perspective over the next year as a possibility. In terms of other types of, of pay cuts or adjustments in pay, we've had no discussions at Admin Council or Leadership Council of any other types of, of, of pay reductions in terms of plans.
There's some concern that once students get a taste for online courses, that demand for in-person classes will go down. Is there a sense for how this might play out at ISU? Should we be placing higher priority on developing online offerings to meet shifting demand?
Well, we are seeing a mixed reaction to that. I would say, you know, like I said, we don't have survey data about this, although Student Affairs plans to create surveys asking that very question as we get farther into this crisis and, and away from this term. But anecdotally, in the provost's office, we've got a mix of reactions from students. We have a lot of students telling us that they've never missed. They didn't understand how much they valued face-to-face interaction. They didn't understand how much they valued being able to just drop into their faculty members' office and how important those connections are with faculty, that one-on-one time that they are getting in a different way now. But it's not the same as it is face-to-face. So we're hearing a lot about that. My feeling is that more than ever, we will see students valuing those interactions that are face-to-face with other students. And then the serendipity of those face-to-face reactions that come only when you're in the same room. And when you can stop by someone's office on your way to the student union. Those are the things that we're hearing. They really miss. So I would say that we probably won't have a, a reaction that means most students want to be fully online. On the other hand, we are hearing from students, they like the flexibility of it. They like the fact that they can take these classes in their pajamas, of course, at midnight. I live with one of these students. I don't love his schedule. But I understand that, you know, that they like that flexibility associated with the online. So my anticipation is that we're going to see a mix. They want some things online. But they want that face-to-face time with their faculty member. And I think they're going to want more of that than we even understand right now as a result of this. And I think we all probably will value that face-to-face time in a way that we didn't understand before. I don't see as an existential crisis for face-to-face delivery, in other words.
Should we be planning for smaller class sizes and therefore needing to have more sections taught for face-to-face classes or labs?
Well, that's one of the reasons why I'm anxious to, you know, find out what our plan will be because I think certainly if we are face-to-face in that second summer term, those second summer sessions, we will need social distancing in our labs. So we've already notified the College of Technology, for example, that they need to be prepared for that. And that we need to probably be prepared in some of these face-to-face environments to ensure that we can have social distancing. Some are, it's easier to do than in others. I would anticipate that large groups, even into the fall, may have challenges. We may not want two hundred people in a small space. That's certainly the, what I'm hearing from our health teams is that large groups may need to be create, may need to be lowered, that we might not be able to have so many students in a lab. So those are the kinds of changes to this fall schedule that we will likely have to put into place as soon as we know what these plans are. My only, the only thing I can say is that we are going to make that decision as rapidly as we can without preemptively making the, making it difficult. So if we're too early with that decision, we might end up having to change it. And I definitely don't want to make multiple changes over time. So we're going to try to hit the sweet spot with that. Right now, you may know, if you are a scheduler or if you're involved in scheduling, that the course schedule for fall is currently not accessible. That's because we had a lot of changes happening. And I wanted to make sure that we put the brakes on that while we get a little bit more information on two things. One, the budget process, because we don't know what the outcome will be. We don't know if we are even going to accept these adjunct reductions from COSI as part of the mix or if we'll accept all of it. So we don't have that outcome. And then we don't know either what the phased-in plan will be for back-to-work. And we just needed to put the brakes on that schedule for a few days while we get a little bit more information. That doesn't mean that that schedule won't change. It will. I understand that the schedule that we have posted, the students are registering into, is not the one we likely will have. And we will make sure that the provost's office provides us support in making those changes. But yes, I think we will probably have social distancing in our labs in a way that we have not had to do in the past.
How will this situation and budget situation affect other campuses such as the Idaho Falls campus?
Same, you know, exactly the same issues. Lyle can certainly speak to that. He's on the call. But our plan in terms of how we implement a phased-in approach, for example, the decision points will be the same for all of our campuses. So we're not going to say, because Meridian has more, is in a community with greater community spread, that it has a later timeline. We're going to try to get everybody aligned so that it's not too difficult and unwieldy to manage. You want to add anything to that, Lyle?
No, we're going to look at the course schedule really carefully. And we're going to be keeping track of enrollment, the same as will be taking place on the main campus or Twin Falls, for that matter. And so, nothing different than what's happening everywhere else.
And, you know, one of the things that we have going for us is that every institution in the country is facing the same challenges. And I'm on multiple groups and calls, the American Council for Academic Officers Group. And those are provosts from all over the country. And we meet regularly to talk through, how are you handling the fall schedule? And then the Western Interstate Commission for Higher Ed Provost Group as well. And we're doing the same thing there. And then I'm meeting with my counterparts at University of Idaho and Boise State and Lewis and Clark State on a regular basis also. So we are trying to align our grading plans and our scheduling plans across the system as a whole in Idaho, but also doing that with our counterparts in other states so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We know everybody is in the same boat here. Some of us have more complex program mixes, like us, but everybody has the same challenges with the fall term.
What if we end up in a situation like Georgia and South Carolina where the state moves to open up quickly, but workers do not feel safe returning to campus?
That's a great question and one I have posed to our health team as well. The answer was they are going to follow CDC. Our plan is to follow CDC recommendations, working with the state as well. But we anticipate that we will have tiered options for faculty and staff who may not be comfortable in those first phases and that there will be options, telework options in that timeframe.
How much of the CARES Act stimulus money to ISU will be used to reduce the impact of our COVID budget shortfalls?
That is a question I'm going to have to bat to Glenn.
Okay, Jenny, could you repeat the very last part of that?
Absolutely. So how much of the CARES Act stimulus money to ISU will be used to reduce the impact of our COVID budget shortfalls?
Okay, at this point in time, the way, let me describe how the CARES Act works to begin with. We will be getting approximately $7.1 million from the federal government for the CARES Act. The first 50% of that that we received, a little over 3.5 million, needs to be returned or flowed through the students in the form of grant aid. And we're currently formulating a plan of how to do that, that the plans will become, will be forthcoming. The second 50%, the other 3.5 million, we are waiting specific guidance from the Department of Ed. We anticipate receiving that guidance late next week. But we have been told that the universities will be able to use those funds in a very wide range of, to cover a wide range of expenditures or revenue shortfalls related to COVID. But we don't have the specific guidelines yet. That being said, we can also allocate some of those dollars to financial aid as we did with the first three and a half million. But until we see the extent of the impact of the COVID crisis and the length, it'll be prudent for us to wait for instructions from the Department of Ed to look at what our fiscal challenges are before we determine how to spend that second three and a half million.
Regarding budget cuts, has upper administration, perhaps all of the university presidents in solidarity, made a well-articulated case to the governor that funding for higher education be spared as it is a key to post-crisis survival of the state?
That is, what do you want to answer that, Laura? I'm sorry, I started.
Go ahead.
Okay, that is basically the job description that the president, Laura, Rex, myself, and others in leadership have. We regularly communicate to legislators. The president speaks frequently with the governor's office, with the governor himself or his chief of staff. The state board office advocates on our behalf. There's no shortage of individuals who are carrying the flag towards the importance of higher education to the sustainability and the productivity of our economy. So it's not something that we can turn the switch on because it's been off. This has been, this is part of our daily job, particularly for Laura, myself, and the president. We are in constant contact with the powers to be in Boise and carry that message every day.
And I would just add to that, that the state board meets with the provost and the presidents and the chief financial officers regularly, at least monthly, most of the time more, certainly now, meeting weekly. And they really have carried that message also. The state board office and the state board of ed are carrying the message about the importance of higher ed in the economy, the importance of higher ed in rebuilding an economy if we do have a protracted recession or a fiscal downturn and the value of higher ed to the state as a whole. So we feel supported certainly by the efforts of the board.
Should leadership decide that a furlough is necessary, could you please consider household size, the number of dependents, in addition to salary when making decisions about how many days a given employee should be furloughed? Could this information be collected from our Form W4s?
I'm not sure exactly how, if we did go to a furlough plan, how it would be managed. I could certainly see a situation where a person would have choice in how they managed those furlough hours in that scenario. Glenn, do you want to add anything to that?
Well, I think on the first thing, as I mentioned earlier with furloughs and preliminary discussions, just batting the idea around, I believe there's been a strong sentiment that the furloughs, that the number of furlough days be based upon your salary so that the lower-paid employees are affected less rather than an across-the-board, everyone takes X number of days or percentage pay cut, which is done in the corporate world, not what we're looking at. We wanted to do, we'll want to do something that is on a sliding scale that protects our faculty and staff at the lowest ends of our pay scale to the greatest extent possible. In terms of factoring in family size, we don't have access to that information. And in fact, the W4s that was meant, that are meant, that was mentioned in that question, that's simply the number of exemptions. That takes into account things in addition to your family size. So we do not have ready access to the number of dependents that are actually in each employee's or faculty member's household.
Follow-up question, could it be possible for employees to volunteer for furloughs to relieve lower-paid employees from having to take a furlough?
Again, I think at this point in time, we have not entered into the furlough debate. We've simply started to have discussions as to what a furlough plan might look like. I do know that there is some sentiment from some of the discussions I've had that a voluntary furlough plan doesn't always feel voluntary to some people. And is, in this case, may not be the most equitable way to spread the hardship that we're all going to have to endure. But it's certainly something that Laura and I can take back to Admin Council if there is engagement on the furlough plan. Have you seen it differently than that?
No, absolutely the same. Jenny says there is one more question and a comment. Is that accurate?
Two questions and one comment. So the comment is, this seems like an opportunity to have a hybrid, to have a hybrid university that offers both brick-and-mortar services as well as growing the online options where applicable. BYUI has 20,000 students on campus and two or three times that doing online schooling. Wouldn't growing the online portion increase enrollment and help with deficits we currently face?
Well, I think it's certainly something that we will look at as part of our planning going forward. We have had, as you know, an EISU structure for a number of years. We haven't utilized that structure to create a standalone online option for students. And so that is one of the things that we have a charter looking at in terms of what are ISU's online opportunities. I think this environment's going to highlight with those opportunities and maybe what those deficits are in terms of what kinds of resources we would need to more effectively support that. So I anticipate that those two things will be outcomes of that conversation. And there is a charter focusing on that. I think its work will be re-energized as a result of this situation.
Okay, does housing have the ability to spread students out to minimize contact if students are back on campus in the fall?
I don't think we have anybody from Student Affairs on our call. I know that they had a phased plan for managing that when we went into the period prior to the state home order. Glenn, do you know what their plan is for that?
No, I haven't, I have not seen a plan for the fall. Residence halls certainly are difficult because you have multiple people in a room, everyone on the floor sharing a bathroom. And so it makes it a little more difficult. But I have not seen any plans for the fall. Doesn't mean they don't exist.
That's one of the things that we will be updating. I anticipate having another round of town halls probably after the budgets are, the budget process completes and we know more about our return-to-work plan. Go ahead, Jenny.
Okay, two final questions. The first one, are furloughed employees expected to continue to work during their furlough?
We currently do not have a furlough plan. So I'm sorry, there's not really an answer to that question at this point in time.
Okay, and this is the last question that I have. I've heard from students who are returning unexpectedly from LDS missions and are interested in applying to ISU. The timing means that they missed the February 15th application deadline for scholarships, like the Idaho Index Award. Is there any way to offer additional flexibility to get these students to ISU?
Great question, and the answer is yes. Student Affairs and Scholarship Office have extended those deadlines for scholarships into midsummer, I think August. I'm not totally certain of what the new deadline is. Lyle, do you know what that new deadline is?
Not off the top of my head, but I can find out.
I want to say August 1st. I could be wrong about that, but I know they've extended it and that one of the populations that is benefiting from that are missionaries who returned home unexpectedly or missionaries who are planning on launching in September, October, and who are not leaving now until further notice. So we know that we will be picking up, we've already seen that traffic, picking up a number of those students.
A follow-up question to that is if that is being marketed?
I know the Student Affairs has sent out marketing materials related to this to its student list, but I can get more information about that and share it with the deans. And I think that's all we have time for, Jenny, unless there is something else hanging out there.
Nope, that's it. Thank you, Laura.
I want to thank Jenny for her hard work here and her support of us. And also all of the deans who joined us today and all of the faculty who joined in as well. We had like 100 and something at the high end. These are being recorded. We do plan on having another round of town halls and academic affairs later, probably, as I said, after the budget process wraps up and when we know more about what our reentry plan looks like after the state home order has expired and we know more about the state's approach to that. So you will see those town halls options appearing. They'll likely be after the nine-month contracts are not, you know, some of you won't be on contract when those town halls happen. But I certainly don't expect you to join us unless you want to, but the town hall option will be available. And with that, I just want to say thanks to everyone. Really appreciate the time with all of you. I wish it was face-to-face. But we are making the most of our technological capacity. One of the great things about not being in 1918 is that they didn't have these choices. And so that has made our transition better than theirs. And certainly appreciate all of the hard work everyone has put into the sustainability of the institution and in sustaining these opportunities for students under very difficult circumstances. So thank you to all of you and have a good afternoon. And we will be back in touch. Don't forget that all of the communications I have sent to deans about our response and various updates regarding that are posted on the Academic Affairs Coronavirus website. And you can reach out to my office via an email. Callie is still scheduling my meetings. So please feel free to reach out if you have questions that I can help you with. Have a great afternoon.